Good morning, and I'd like to officially call to order the Potter County Commissioners Court June 23, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. Let the record note those in attendance, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Moria, Judge Ware, Commissioner Church, and Commissioner Vaughn. I invite you to please stand as Commissioner Vaughn leads us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Well, girlie, thank you for this opportunity to gather this morning, ma'am, to do the business that is effective for the citizens of Potter County and all the citizens in the surrounding area. Lord, we'd like to actually give us a sermon that is a spirit of discussion and debate, and as we discuss, ma'am, have us to receive the information, debate as we go forward and make those decisions. We thank you for all the parking heads and all the workers of Potter County, and to do a business for the President, and to all the citizens here in this county, all the fresh responders, the people standing in the gap, the protection of all of us. Lord, we ask the President blessing upon those serving in the military, both the spirited porn theaters around the world, and their families, and the people in support. Guide us, go with us, and keep us, oh, Lord, in this day and time.
..................................................................................................................
Item number one, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from June 9, 2014, Potter County Commissioners Court. Would you like to entertain a motion?
Sure.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly, and a second for Judge Ware approving minutes. All those in favor show hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero. Item two, vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county auditor's office for the period of June 4 through June 17, 2014. Check numbers 156, 121 through 156, 448, wire number 390 through 397, in the amount of $2,124,143.58. Would you like to entertain a motion by the court?
Second.
I have a motion by Judge Ware.
A second by, in any, hold on, discussion.
Second for discussion by Commissioner Vaughn. Would you like to open the floor to questions by the court?
I've got one on page 25 to 34 for Roger. I don't see him here.
Hi, it's Roger.
You've got a Western equipment purchase of a seat cushion. And it's $528 bucks.
So seat, a tractor seat that been replaced where I'm assuming that's what I did.
We don't want those guys too comfortable out there.
We don't know that they need something to sit on.
Commissioner, that's also four, six? Six.
Six, I understand. Thank you.
I have a question, David, page 11 of 34, check number 156, 266, in the amount of $5,048.27. Willis, Texas, is the environment pollution liability, it appears to be a policy, I don't remember seeing that in the proposal recently, but I certainly may have missed that.
Yeah, it was. It's for our underground storage tanks on our fuel system. We have to have that, and it was on that list of schedules up the two.
Okay. I have one more question, page 12 of 34, check number 156, 277, in the amount of $481.90, AV Corp, emergency district court, fire. Mike, can you shed some light into that?
Which number is it?
Check number 156, 277. AV Corp is the vendor?
We had a, on our emergency recall for our elevators, we had an issue with our alarm. We had to transform the tree. Tells the elevator when to recall back to first, audiovisual kind of might be.
Okay. Any other questions from the court? I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor show hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number three, insurance report, to recognize the insurance report. Okay, do you have anything you'd like to address the court with?
Oh, no, ma'am.
Any questions from the court on the insurance report? So recognized. Item number four, treasures report, to recognize the treasures report, a monthly cash report. Liam?
Good morning, morning. We have to have a feature, just, I'll keep it more in-depth in court next month with our, you know, quarter in the investment report as well. We did have a $10 million seeders CD that matured last week. I put $5 million of it back into Texpool, and $3 million went to, um, $5 million went to another seeders, three-month seeders, and $5 million went to Texpool. There is another avenue I'd like to use, another instrument for investments that I'll bring to the court next month, for us to invest the other $5 million. Um, today's total that we have as our cash available is $22,608,974.15. So, we're getting very high. But I'll keep it much more in-depth, especially on the investments and where we are with our cash.
What about overall stability of the market, anything you could share?
It's still very volatile, as you know. Texpool this morning was 2.7, and so it's in about 3, Texpool, and somewhere around 6 for Texpool Prime. It's just not a play, I mean, it's just a place we can set cash for, but I don't, I try not to leave it there more than overnight, or just, you know, a very short period, and put it in other places where we can, um, have better investments. I have 8.1 million in the A and B checking account, which is 25, and then with our three-month seeders, we are 35, and six months is.
Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Questions in the court? Item number four, treasures report, so recognized. Item five, Potter County projects, to hear report on various Potter County projects and take any necessary action. Mike?
Good morning. Just a few items here to read up to date on, uh, the Potter County Courthouse, one of the warranty claims, number 64, one of the largest ones that's been completed by a local contractor. So we're through with all the local contractors right now, we're just waiting on the journey manager to respond on the remainder of that, of that work.
And Mike, what was the item, item 64?
Uh, this was where the contractor came to and replaced all the ceiling for all the caulking on the entire systems. That was warranty claim number 64.
Do we have, we have an idea of the, uh, the timeframe, Chairman, is there an idea of this one?
No. We're still on the holy pattern as far as the litigation, litigation. So we have made it file an answer to a pleaded intervention, and we filed, and that's, that's all of it. Until, until there's a really important appeals on what happened, that's as far as our arbitration order, that, that litigation's at a standstill, and I don't have any idea of it.
Is there a typical timeline, Dave, in terms of a benchmark?
No, there's not. It, it just depends on the court, and, and of course, once the court rules, depending on how the court rules, uh, then, you know, they'll have to decide whether they need to go to mediation or arbitration again, or whether or not, you know, whether the name is set for trial, you proceed for the trial, in this case, if you're on trial lock-in, which we, this kind of goes. So I would not expect an early resolution of this, of this matter. Uh, the non-emergency help projects, uh, we are currently reviewing all the cost proposals sent back in to what we have in our possession right now, and we'll bring them to the court before we proceed further.
And Mike, I do have an update for you in the court in terms of the tri-state fair property. Virgil did contact me over the weekend to indicate they have a report, and they'll be bringing that back to court. So we should expect that probably in the next couple sessions of this.
Uh, not heard anything from XL, I mean, the programs that we initiated with them, so we're still waiting on response to them.
Good questions.
Commissioner, do you have any, the insight as far as where, if you're leaning as far as the project?
I do not. I just know that the report was completed. My expectation is, is if it's going to be brought back to court, um, they would formulate an opinion to justify the original, that would be my guess.
And this is based off of their request to go bring in another?
Correct, yes, correct. So we'll, we'll reconvene as, as that subcommittee kind of establishes, and then we'll keep the full court informed.
Do you also see a reconvene, meeting of that subcommittee prior to next session?
Possibly, if, if depending on the details, so that we are able to bring clean information and clear information back to the court. Okay. Item number six, Potter County Extension Office, to hear an agent update regarding activity posted by the Potter County Extension Office, and I am expecting.
Good morning.
Well, I just wanted to take a few minutes this morning to visit with y'all about state roundup. We just got back about a week and a half ago. Um, and also to thank, I know Commissioner Church and Mr. Webster, and Commissioner Uwe, were able to come in and interview some of our scholarship recipients. We took three of those kids down there, came back with about $25,000 in scholarships for those three. Could have been a little bit closer to $40,000, but one of the young ladies received the Terry Scholarship, so that kind of changed up the money a little bit, so. Um, we're, we're really, um, happy with those three. We took 23 kids to call a station for a week. It was a, quite a bit of work. We took eight volunteer leaders that helped us throughout the week, get kids everywhere, and we did really well. Our laptop judges were, um, in the top, top five in the contest, and, uh, it was, it was a really good week. We have scored kind of all over the place, and, um, kids are excited, ready to go back. And what's the proudest for me about those 23 kids is that was the highest, um, delegation from a county that, across the district, so. Here in the panhandle, Texas, we took the most, and I was, I was pretty proud of that. Some other things we've had going, we just finished that bag fair in the middle of the evening. Um, about 40 volunteers donated over 200 hours of time there. Um, it was a one-day event this year. I know most of you are used to the two-day event we usually put on, but this year we reached about 1,200 fourth graders from across Amarillo, XL Energy, Southwest Dairy, Kids Council of War, and then the Potter and Randall Extension Offices came together and put that event on. And, uh, just to wrap it up, we just finished our spring curriculum enrichment efforts. Uh, we put almost 55 incubators, um, in classrooms around the Amarillo, reached a little over 2,000 kids, I'm still working on the final numbers there. So we, we got those projects going really successfully, and even hoping to maybe open up a fall session, but we'll, we'll see about that. So, just wanted to thank y'all for your time and your support of our program, and much of y'all know how our state roundup case is.
Can you tell us a little bit more about that Terry Scholarship?
Terry Scholarship?
There's a lot of people that.
Uh, Terry Scholarship is, um, basically whenever all your scholarships come in, um, they've been awarded, Terry just says, "What else do you owe?", and they pay the rest of it. So, um, the, uh, they call the kids down to Dallas for an interview, and they do a couple phone interviews, but, um, that, you can fly there, you can drive there, whatever you want, Terry picks up the cost even. Um, a District 2 kid had to fly from Washington, they were on a conference there. Um, Terry flew him in from Washington, um, in a hotel overnight, flew him back, even, uh, I, that Terry Scholarship's pretty amazing, so I think he's right there with ours, most definitely.
Well, even the candidates that you allowed us to interview, amazing young leaders, and so I certainly encourage them to stay local, because we need them.
Yeah, they're, all three of those are really good kids, so.
Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your report. Item number six, vehicle purchase, to consider and act upon the purchase of a used vehicle for up to $10,000 to replace a totaled vehicle by the county attorney's office. Funds to be determined, Dave.
Um, I'll just give you a little history on this item. In December of last year, we had a wreck with our, one of our county attorney's vehicles, and it was totaled, it was the other party's fault, and we got a check back for that. Um, the county attorney said they could wait and see what vehicles we might get in that were turned in from other departments, and, um, they did take one of those vehicles, and it's broken down three times, so they're just wanting to replace the vehicle that was wrecked, and, um, as far as funds, I don't know what's available, or where they want to take that from, so that's why that's written like that. But, um, we're asking permission for up to $10,000 to purchase a used vehicle for them, so.
And did we receive a claim reimbursement on the vehicle when it was originally totaled?
Yeah, we did. We got a check for around $13,000, and that was put back into their gambling funds, because that, that vehicle was totaled, was purchased with those funds, so that's where the funds are.
And so, Kerry, would that be appropriate a fund to take those dollar amounts from? And what was the funding?
County Attorney.
I like to.
Yeah. I move that, um, we allow the purchase of a used vehicle up to $10,000. Uh, funds coming from the county attorney's court.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church, and a second from Judge Ware. Dave, before we take the vote, I just want to clarify, the forfeiture funds, the way that fund is allocated, we can make a motion for those particular dollar amounts. I know that there are some forfeiture funds that the court is not allowed to kind of dive into. If I remember correctly, that one is?
That's correct.
Okay.
Designated for purpose, sort of, I mean, it's not exactly like a hot check fund, but yes, you're right.
And it's appropriate action for the court to allocate from that fund?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor show hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number eight, fire station property, to consider and act upon the purchase of property for fire station number three, and sending a notice to waive the additional days in the evaluation period. Okay? Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
Well, I'll start. I put the, I put the summary in your packet, I hope all of you had a chance to review that. Um, we made that offer of $30,000, and they did, they did accept that. So, um, there, there were 30 days we had to evaluate that property, and we'd actually already started looking at it before we put that offer in. So, um, our architect has looked at it, Mike has looked at it, there's been other vendors that have looked at it as well as the fire station, so our recommendation is to go ahead and proceed and waive that evaluation period, and let them know that we're ready to purchase it, so.
And Pat, do you have any concerns on the location, property?
No. I talked with Mark Randall from Avery and Redding about the water. He said he used to there that they've been having some problems with salt water with the people up around us, and I know the ones just down the road all have good water. If it's got salt water, we'll just have to put in a filter system, take a reverse osmosis system as well as suggested, take it out.
Mike, anything you want to add in terms of the land evaluation?
I think it's a good piece of property, we're ready to report.
Taking a while, this is taking a while to get done, if you'd like to, if you're in business, where does it go? I figured we all smiled this morning.
All smiles this morning.
Right.
I have a motion from Judge Ware to approve the purchase of property for fire station number three, as per the recommendation presented to the court. Did I say that there?
Certainly.
I have a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor show hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Certainly.
And thank you, everyone, for your evaluation on property. I know it has been a long process. Item number nine, formal bid, number 1092-14, transport services, to consider and act upon the following, opening a single bid, A to D mortuary for the transport of human remains, item B award formal bid, 1092-14. You need a motion to open the single bid?
I need permission to open the single bid, as per policy put in place, and then, um, if, if you don't mind, we might come back to this at the very end, and that'll give me a chance to look at the prices compared to last time, and that way I can tell you the percentage change from what we've been paying, what this will be, and we can come back to B if that's okay.
Okay. Would you like to open the floor for a motion for just item A, as though it's under your agenda?
I have a motion. Here, not a minute. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly, and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero, and we will be back for item B. Item number 10, local government corporation, LGC, to consider and act upon appointing a member of the Potter County Commissioners Court as an ex officio member of the local government corporation. I'll take the initial discussion on this, because I specifically spoke to our mayor and Jared in reference to an ability for our court to proactively, um, address anything that may be involving both entities. And a suggestion was that Potter County participate as an ex officio on the LGC. Uh, we have Mr. Pittner with us today, I, he would be the president, uh, so this is certainly open for the full court. Again, the idea was to continue kind of the footprint of Potter County and where we are in terms of those discussions. Our next agenda item that we will get to, the tax abatement certainly brought to the forefront some opportunity to grow in those communication streams, and so I would expect the court to certainly be appreciative that we will potentially have a seat at that table. I'd like to open the floor for discussions and/or nomination.
Well, I know that you've been very interested in this, and have attended those meetings. I would move that, um, we appoint Mercy Moria as our representative to the LGC.
I'll say a second motion.
Uh, and for discussion, I agree with the, uh, the, the nomination, except, uh, give us a little background as far as the LGC is, with respect to what it, what it does.
Mr. President, you want to come up and explain?
Sure.
I figured you would, if you have any problem.
Guys, commissioners, uh, good morning. Uh, because of what I do for a living, I've done for a living for about 37 years, not unusual for me to be a person. But it is unusual for me to not be wearing my PRPC cap while I'm doing it. Uh, so the cap that I'm wearing today is my private citizen cap, I guess, in terms of being a, a volunteer, serving on local government corporation, uh, here, here, here in Amarillo, and, uh, and a citizen of Potter County, and a citizen of the city of Amarillo. Uh, the local government corporation was established by the Emerald City Commission at the time, back in 2011. Technically, the creature is, is defined and exists as a result of a statutory language in the Texas Transportation Code that allows municipalities to create these kind of creatures. Uh, they are a bit of a hybrid between a nonprofit corporation and a public entity. Uh, the public nature of the entity requires that our names to be open, and our records to be open to the, to the public, so that's the public nature of the local government corporation. Uh, the purpose of the creation of the LGC back in 2011, non-city commission, was to allow the LGC to go about the public side, the public-private partnership, to develop the three-pronged, um, development project for downtown Amarillo, the hotel, ballpark, and the associated parking garage. So our task is a very specific task, and our charge is a very specific charge, is the LGC, and that's to implement, uh, those projects within the parameters of the approval of those projects by the Emerald City Commission back in August of 2011. It's a seven-member body, uh, appointed by the Emerald City Commission. I have a couple of my colleagues in the audience today, Commissioner Jim Sims and Ron Boyce, uh, so we are three of the seven currently serving in the LGC. The bylaws of the LGC allow for the appointment of ex officio members to the body, of which there are two, and now possibly three, with the addition of Potter County Grab today. The two current, uh, LGC ex officio members are the Emerald City Manager and the Executive Director of Downtown Emerald Inc. Friday, at duty called meeting of the LGC, the board voted to amend, uh, voted to, uh, to create a new ex officio, didn't take a battle, but we voted to create a new ex officio position for Potter County to be held by an appointee from the county, a commissioner, a judge, a commissioner-elect, or a judge-elect, precisely what that function states. Uh, so, Commissioner, that's the purpose of the LGC, and that's the composition of the LGC. You know, there's, in my opinion, uh, there is, oh, there's never a bad time, it's always a good time to put in place structural, uh, changes and structural improvements to improve cooperation and communication between local government entities. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for you to do that. I'll be acting as a.
I thank you for that, that referral, Eli, and I certainly concur with the issue of Potter County Bacon Ball. My question and concern was, why did it take so long as far as the, the presentation of the city, or adding a member of the court or county to that, that committee?
Well, you know, you learn as you go. Uh, again, this is a municipal body, and it was, the seven of us were appointed by the Emerald City, City Commission, and we're certainly open to the addition of new folks, and as I stated last Friday, there might be additional folks as we continue to grow and develop and move forward with, with this initiative. Uh, so it's, it's just a matter of continuing to learn how to do with it, Commissioner, and and broaden the, the focus of the table.
It's called evolving.
I'm the guy with ex officio status, so you give us a, what that tells as far as the.
Sure, sure. Obviously, you're there at the table, you're able to participate in discussions, you're able to attend and participate in executive sessions, per executive sessions that are, that are necessary per state law, and the kinds of things that you discuss in executive session. Uh, and, and I will say that the LGC, that the, of the possibility to continue to evolve to actually amending the bylaws and, and this expanding the, uh, the membership from the voting standpoint, as we move forward. However, we thought it was important to, uh, to make this offer now within, break up the existing structure, and, uh, for, for opportunity to, to, to make a limit to the bylaws, and that's certainly, that's something I know the body would be concerned.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion on the table and.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Dave. I have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of Mr. Moria, serving to represent the local government corporation on behalf of Potter County, show hands please. Opposed? And I will abstain. Motion carries.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item, are you ready to come up to yours before we close? Item number nine, the award formal bid, 1092-14 to A and D Mortuary.
Um, the rates are unchanged from the last five years that we've had, so my recommendation would be to continue forward and award this bid to Assets A and D Mortuary. Um, the fee structure on per diem for meals has changed slightly, um, but as far as their rates for, for picking up a deceased and transporting them to the level of frauds, obviously, there's no change in costs, so.
What about any contractual changes typically? I, I can't remember the term, babe, of when that contract ended. I know we evaluated it about two years ago.
About a two-year term.
So we may need to bring that contract back through the court?
What are you referencing, uh, the actual?
There is an actual written contract with the vendor.
Well, I guess at this point, we don't have a written contract, but we just have a bid.
Okay.
So, because, uh, and if we need to draft one up, I suppose we can do that, but I think that if it's fixed, we probably could have.
Sure. I, I know that there is one in existence, I, I remembering some discussion around that is where I'm coming from, so if there's an opportunity to bring that forward, back to the court, this would probably be a good time after.
Okay. I'll, I'll get with Dave.
Is it fixed to find a number of years for this?
It's, it's a two-year fixed with three one-year options to renew, and this is just for the transport of, of human remains, it's not for cremation or anything else. Uh, this is just transport.
Any reason to go into too much detail over that? It's pretty cut and clear, so. We can change it to two years, or keep it?
But I was just going, we do need a contract, uh, like.
Just for the continuity, since it exists today.
Well, let's, let's look at it and see. Frankly, there, I'm not so sure, Dave's specifications are good enough that there wouldn't be any more detail in the written contract, you may not need.
And so possibly it may be a term change, just to supplement, and that may be fine as well.
Whatever. You will, legally speaking, you've got a contract right now, uh, but if you want, if you want to reduce that to a written form, we'd be happy to do that for you.
Okay.
I move we award a formal bid, 1092-14 to Assets A and D Mortuary. One second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church, and a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, show hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Jason, if I could get your assistance with the TV monitors up front. I see you in the audience, or Mike, to turn those on. Uh, we will have the next agenda item, I do have just a couple PowerPoint slides to set the stage, and if I can ask the court to change their screen to the actual laptop. Yes. Yes. Okay. I am operating. I am operating this from a wireless mouse up here, so if there is any lag in technology, bear with me. Item number 11, tax abatement, to consider and act upon a request for tax abatement from the Emerald Economic Development Corporation and Coca-Cola Refreshments, and to take any other action necessary. What I have presented to the commissioners this morning on your table here is some information that I found in preparation for the meeting. So you'll notice that I have tabbed it just so that it is quick reference, and you'll also visually see some of these items on your screen before you... We'll obviously open this up for discussion and allow parties to address the court. The first thing that I have in terms of correction on the application itself, which I know was included in your packet, the application for tax abatement, item number six, references the project to be approximately 9.5 million. That's different from information I had. It was 8.5 million, so I certainly wanted to pass that along to the court. The application speaks to 9.5. And on page two of your application, really a correction from my perspective, speaks to employment items. There is a section on our application that requests the number of new jobs to be created as a result of proposed improvements. 147 transfers are referenced. I have confirmed with AEDC, and though the correction will really be zero, it was documented in terms of that's the existing employee base, and that's what will go to the proposed property. So the creation of new jobs, that would be a correction on the application to zero. On our application, it requests financial information so that the court can evaluate the applicant and the need, if you will, and I am going to read directly from the application, that Potter County may require such financial and other information deemed appropriate for evaluating the financial capacity and other factors pertaining to the applicant. It was documented on here from Coca-Cola, an annual report, a 10K report, and it referenced online. So I have pulled that online. You have a copy of the full report in front of you. That's page one of that tab, the green C P note, if you will, but these are the dollar amounts that you have before you on the screen. The net operating revenue, you'll notice here it's referenced in millions, 46, and the balance sheet shows a total assets of 90 million. So that was referenced on the application, but not readily available, so I did want to get that to the court to evaluate that. I'm already seeing a lag. Jason, I may need you to advance the slider. The battery may have gone out. The next item that you have is information that AEDC presented, and so I just want to be very clear about what we are obviously discussing and the potential proposal. So this information was provided by AEDC, specifically Brian Jennings, and what the impact would be to Potter County. So you'll notice to the far left is the existing taxes that are paid, and what the organization is requesting is the additional amount, and we'll obviously open that for discussion here. The approximate new value is referenced below, and so here's a yearly recap, that's that red box, yearly recap of what that would mean, and that is the new taxes, that is the proposal. And following that, what the impact would be for 10 years, because that is what is being requested. So in terms of full transparency to the court, I just wanted to make that visible and clear. You also have that information in front of you. Any questions on that slide?
And the block that you're referencing and read certainly is the loss for, not as far as land and business.
With the potential, with the potential development, yes, Commissioner. Right, if I can get you to advance to the next slide. Thank you. You also have in your packet our criteria for abatement. I know the court is aware that we recently have cleaned up some of the language, if you will, but I just, for the sake of discussion, I included for you the actual guidelines that were approved by the court. And some of that language, page two of that document that you see in your packet, is the criteria for abatement. Now, you'll obviously notice language in there for new facilities and improvement to existing facilities. I think it goes without saying, this court has typically taken the precedence of new facilities. There is language into criteria for discussion, but I do just want to highlight the precedence of this court, because quite honestly, we don't do abatements often. You'll see that in your packet. Item F that you'll notice on the PowerPoint is the value of the abatement will be determined based on the merits of the project, including but not limiting to total capital investment by the party requesting the abatement and added employment. And obviously, you have all this formal language in front of you, but I do just want to take a moment and highlight, however, a project must provide an extraordinary economic benefit to the county to be considered for 100% abatement. So this is our existing guidelines and just highlighting them for the court. Will you... To the next slide. I think this may be my last slide, and then we will open it up for discussion. So what you have here is just an analysis that I've completed, and this certainly helps me in my framework, and I wanted to provide that to the court. And so I have just highlighted a few of our major employers and tax investors, if you will, from Potter County, and what that base looks like, what their taxable value is, and their employee base snapshot of how many jobs we're talking about with those organizations. So I think that this court is very aware of the uncharted territory for the proposal, and I just want to make sure the court is recognizing the potential for future abatements should that occur. And so I wanted to make that visible to the court and obviously the public.
Could you go back to the previous slide? I'm really zoning in on the last. However, a project must provide extraordinary economic benefits to the county to be considered for 100% abatement. I'm just trying to get my hands around this as far as speaking of specifically for the county, the benefit that is derivative of the county and the extraordinary efforts they went into this to ensure that that is certain specific to Potter County and not to the overall entity within the LGC.
Sure, and Commissioner, we will open the floor here shortly. I know that we have representatives from AEDC as well as Coca-Cola that I'm sure will speak to that directly. My purpose of just putting a few slides together was really to kind of set the stage for discussion of what we have traditionally done. I've also provided in your packet some research that I've done, kind of fact-finding on our existing abatements, and that is the spreadsheet that you have in preparation for the court. You'll notice the bulk of our abatements have certainly been around Bell Helicopter and the initiative through all their phases to build here. We have supported them through phase one. So from a Potter County perspective, I think it's fair to say that, you know, Bell is really our shiny penny, if you will, of how effective an abatement can be and what that can look like to an employee base and look like to the citizens of Potter County. And you'll notice that there really are only a handful of abatements. With that, obviously comes some challenges because we don't do it often, and so we find ourselves really getting versed again in the language when we get a new application. There's obviously potential for growth and what that looks like, but in all fairness to the court, I wanted to provide you the information that I had in preparation, in fact-finding, and then we will open it up. Frank, can you just double-check that on another slide? I don't think that I did, but I just thought you said the last one. Yes, Commissioner?
I think everyone too needs to understand that these are guidelines for the court. And if you look at our number 12 on page six of our guidelines, it also says adoption of these guidelines does not affect the discretion of the Potter County Commissioners' Court to enter into any tax-abatement agreement, nor do these guidelines confer or express any right to have the Commissioners' Court consider or grant a specific application or request for tax abatement. So basically, it's saying these are guidelines, and we can use them where we can, I mean, I just think everybody ought to know that, too.
Yeah, I would absolutely agree with that. And just echo that, obviously, it's the framework in which we will bring our perspective to the table and kind of bet out what is in the interest of our taxpayers. I think that's absolutely fair to put that out. Okay, thank you for your help on that. And of course, the wireless, you're free. I'd like to go ahead and open the floor. Whether AEDC or Coca-Cola would like to take the initial lead on addressing the court, we traditionally allow five minutes as the primary speaker and any additional, including public comment, three minutes should that occur.
Thank you, Judge, and County Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to bring forth this exciting project. Tell us your consideration today. Yes, sir. My name is Brian Jennings, and I'm Vice President of Business Development at the Emerald EDC. The Emerald EDC has been working with Coca-Cola on the relocation of its downtown facility to a new facility in Centerport, Missouri. Centerport is owned and operated by the Emerald EDC and is Amarillo's premier industrial development. Situated in Potter County at the intersection of Lakeside and Northeast 24, Centerport is the ideal location for companies with a manufacturing or distribution component. The relocation of Coca-Cola will pave the way for three large-scale projects to be constructed in Amarillo's downtown core. These projects include a convention center hotel, a standalone parking structure, and a multipurpose event venue. Also looks a lot like a baseball stadium. The existing downtown Coca-Cola facility has been selected as the site for the multipurpose event venue. The Emerald EDC and Coca-Cola entered a tentative deal structure on March 27, 2014. This deal structure allows for a 90-day due diligence period to complete property reviews by all parties and secure Coca-Cola's senior management approvals. This due diligence period ends on June 25. In order to secure Coca-Cola approvals and move forward with this project, the Emerald EDC has made applications to all eligible taxing jurisdictions for tax abatement on the new project. To date, the City of Amarillo, Amarillo College, and the Panhandle Brownwater District have all approved a 10-year 100% tax abatement to help this project come to fruition. The details of the tax abatement agreement provide that Coca-Cola will only be granted tax abatement on the increased value of the new improvements at Centerport. That is Coca-Cola will continue to pay its most recent tax bill to each taxing jurisdiction for the term of the abatement. For 2013, Coca-Cola paid Potter County $15,044 on the real property downtown and $27,005 on the business personal property, for a total of $42,049. Under this abatement agreement, Potter County will abate real property taxes of approximately $45,126 per year over the 10-year period on real property loan. The approval of this tax abatement request is an investment by Potter County. Under this tax abatement, there is to be no loss in revenue, as Coca-Cola will continue to pay what it has always paid, and there is to be a substantial increase in tax revenue after year 10 to Potter County by a factor of four. It will ensure the retention of 147 physicians in Amarillo and will provide Coca-Cola, one of the most recognizable companies in the world, the support needed to invest in technology, efficiency, and market growth so as to remain in our community for a century more. This investment by Potter County will have an overwhelming impact to the economic vitality of this city. Our downtown is our heartbeat. A healthy downtown core is the pulse of any community and provides circulation to the limbs of business and industry that surrounds it. Downtown redevelopment efforts have proved to foster new business growth and create jobs. Couple this with increased tourism, and Amarillo then becomes a destination. Downtown redevelopment efforts also enhance the local tax base, protect property values surrounding the downtown core, eliminate blight, and provide a higher quality of life for the community's residents. On behalf of the Emerald EDC and Coca-Cola Company, and based on the aforementioned benefits to Potter County and her residents, I respectfully request approval for a 10-year 100% tax abatement on the increased value of the new improvements at Centerport. Thank you for this opportunity and for your time this morning, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Frank, I have a question, a really kind of a statement for clarification, because I've heard this theme various times, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding clearly in terms of the retention of jobs. According to my knowledge, Coca-Cola was never indicating that they were moving the location. They were approached by AEDC, so the retention of jobs, to me, implies that there is a potential impact for them to be gone, and I did not hear that theme in discussions preparing for court, and I want to make sure I heard that correctly.
That's correct. The structure of this deal is a job retention program under the Emerald Economic Development Corporation umbrella, but Coke always could leave.
As any organization can, as any...
That's correct. That's correct.
I just want to make sure that I understood the kind of jeopardy statement, if you will, and what the real conversation around that is.
Yes, that's correct.
In terms of all fairness.
So in follow-up to that question, Brian, basically as a retention of project proposal from the Commissioner's standpoint, was there ever, will there be a possibility, probability of a decrease in the employment if the proposal is not accepted?
If the tax abatement is not approved, will there be a decrease in employment? I cannot answer that. Again, I think Coke has options across the board. That's one of the world's most sued companies. They are always looking at efficiencies and what makes sense and...
Will there be an increase?
I think there could potentially be an increase, yes, but what we're asking is that they keep a minimal, in our document, a minimum level of employment in Amarillo, which is 90% of the trailing four quarters on the effective date of the agreement. So if that's 147, they keep 90% of that for four years. Now, what this tax abatement agreement does is it extends that retention period essentially for another six-year period, so it keeps them in that building, operating at a much lower cost, and it ensures that those jobs remain in Amarillo. Also provides them a growth.
But in fairness to your question, Commissioner, because I have asked that question prior to is, should the building be built and the ribbon is cut? We are not expecting new jobs to be a part of it at that time. The statement is, an organization will always evaluate what makes sense for growth and what that should look like, but I don't want to set the stage that we're expecting an immediate growth of jobs, and I'm looking to Coca-Cola for affirmation to make sure I'm saying that correctly. I'd like to address that.
Yes, I do have some guests here with me. I may bring Luisa Caso up. She is the Director of Public Affairs. She's based out of San Antonio, and she's been with us through this process. Luisa, please.
And if I can't bring them, if you would mind, just putting the one slide up with the dollar amounts, just the 10 years, I think it'll be a good visual just to have up there. Thank you for that.
Judge, thank you so much for having us here today. Commissioner, thank you for your questions. We appreciate the opportunity to address and clarify any questions that you may have specifically to this question about growth and capacity. What we as a distribution company dealing with in Amarillo is a very old building. We have been here for over 100 years in that specific operation, and since then, the operations have changed. And with that change, and over the years come technologies that are implemented to make us a more efficient operation. Those technologies that we are currently investing in across the country are not possible in this building. And therefore, what this land exchange offers the opportunity is for the operation in Amarillo to become more efficient, because we will then be able to take advantage of the larger footprint and the larger capacity to be able to house and function the technologies that we would like to put in. So what is that benefit to Amarillo? That benefit to Amarillo is that once the ribbon is cut and we move in, there is a potential for growth. Today, that potential does not exist in this facility. That's where there is a benefit. Now, to say that we were planning to move out to Amarillo... Now, to say that we were planning to move out to Amarillo, the end, the day that they came in, the answer is no. We were not planning to move out to Amarillo. But what this, uh, this land exchange agreement does is that it maintains that we will stay in Amarillo, and we will operate at the level that we are currently operating. Whereas today, that cannot be said. We could leave. Were we thinking about it? No, but we could, as a private industry, I was a public trade industry, but as a public, a private entity, we are able to make those decisions, and we have made those decisions in other communities. I will say, if we're faced with this similar situation, um, where a community did not step up, um, and they wanted to take our land for a downtown development, we ended up not, and we ended up not building a new building on our own, and ended up moving that function out of state. So there's precedence that we have seen. This collaboration is a good collaboration, and I think that from the benefit of this, the community, a benefit of Coca-Cola, it keeps our legacy here in Amarillo, um, and then maintains the possibility for us to continue to grow. The probability is likely in talking to our distribution, um, teams. This community is growing, certainly with a vibrant downtown, even have more of an opportunity to grow, and we all grow together. So with that, I'll stand for your question.
I just have a statement, and I think that we've been focused on, unfortunately, you, Coca-Cola, and not the whole project. And, um, I think that, um, it's hard sometimes, because this is such a unique request for us to, uh, to lose track of what, what else is going to be coming in, um, if this whole project goes to downtown. And so I hope that we don't lose sight that, uh, we're talking about an $81,000 tax abatement per year, but, uh, what is that going to be replacement? We have investors looking to start projects downtown that, uh, names aren't out yet, but I think that if you talk to the right people, there's, there's a lot of activity just waiting to happen, see if this, this will serve. So I guess I don't have a question other than I, another statement. I hope that if, if you do get this abatement and you move out there, we certainly want to see you, we have a big partner in the community, we want to see you, uh, hey, try to encourage your people to live in Potter County, because we're one of the biggest, if we give this to you, you're one of the biggest abatements that you'll get in any single taxing entity, so. I don't know how you can do that, but oftentimes, what we see is, in the big corporations that are here, all the high-paid employees go live in Randall County, so, you know, to take advantage of them having homes here. Anyway, that's just...
If I may, Commissioner, just to, um, address one element, um, you know, one of the, um, one of the ancillary benefits that comes from this, this, having gone through these negotiations for the last three years is really an open dialogue about economic development in Amarillo. And certainly, we see, um, our company as a major tenant of the new industrial park, and us being there to be able to help AEDC and the community attract other manufacturing, um, businesses to the community. Certainly, we want to be a part of that, and, and we can tell a story of over 100 years of doing business in, in Potter County and in Amarillo.
I have a couple of follow-up comments, Commissioner, to echo a few of your statements and, and a question. So I think you're correct. I think the focus has been on Coca-Cola, and in my opinion, rightfully so, they are the applicant and, uh, quite honestly, stand the most to benefit through the situation. For me, I certainly feel it's obviously a bit bold of a for-profit organization with 90 million in assets to essentially get free land and a nine-and-a-half million-dollar building on the taxpayer dollar. And so what this commission often has to do is go out in public and educate and really speak to what that potential economic benefit looks like for Potter County as our entity, if you will. So, um, in terms of coming to request the court, is that part of the traditional model? You spoke to some precedents in the past, or is this just part of the financial package that you were presenting?
This is a land exchange agreement that a tax abatement is a part of. Where this is not, uh, a customary, um, tax abatement request is that we are coming to the county and to the community with a very valuable piece of land, and that land will reach its highest and most potential value in the part of the redevelopment, um, project that is afoot, and it will kick off what will be other, um, economic development, uh, investments from other private entities. So it's, it's not to say or to really single out us as a, as a company requesting this free and outright. We are bringing something very valuable to the table. So, um, I would respectfully disagree with that statement.
And I think that's certainly fair. Um, the, the term of land exchange has been used often, uh, in, in my preparation for court today, and also, a follow-up document that each member of the court has in their packet is a broker's opinion that was presented by AEDC, um, effectively looking at the current value of the land that it sits on today at 2.5, and should the fruition of the multipurpose event venue, I'm calling it correctly, uh, really grow to 8.5. I think the challenge is that that will be an exempt piece of property. The city will eventually own that. So I would agree with you, Ms. Caso, if, um, the proposal was to free up that land for another entity, if you will, that will bring an additional tax base to that property proper, is a very different conversation than a piece of property that will essentially, on that land, have an net effect of zero. So I would agree it's a land exchange, but I do think it's important for the court to recognize that the city will ultimately own that piece of land. I have asked the city, and, uh, we obviously have the city commissioner with us today, if there are any questions in terms of downtown, because I think, obviously, as we've spoke to this morning, this abatement is potentially setting the stage for what that might look like. There's been a lot of confusion around that process, so we definitely want to open those communication lines as well. Correct?
I've got some questions to back up on that, but let me do it. Just a quick here from Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner. While that, that statement is true, uh, Coke, again, is, is going to make all of the taxing jurisdictions whole by pretending to pay them the revenue that they pay them in advance. The benefit to the MPEV is what surrounds it. All of that will be taxable, will be taxable to Potter County, that revenue of Potter County. Uh, so it's the first domino to fall, but it really is the emphasis for everything that will surround it.
Well, and I think, uh, just a follow-up comment to that is the, obviously, the precedence that goes without saying, but Benny Keith was recently moved out to Centerport, got the land, according to my knowledge, as part of the movement, uh, but did not, obviously, get a new building. We were not presented with an abatement from Benny Keith, and they are amongst our top 15 taxpayers to Potter County. So I would, I would absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Church, this abatement is tied to, obviously, other projects, but I do think the court needs to be extremely mindful of the precedence of the uncharted territory, because if I'm an executive at Benny Keith, I would probably request it at the next meeting. That would, if I was wearing a different hat at that time.
Except for they, they only can do it on new, in purpose.
Sure, absolutely. Um, Commissioner, you have some questions, and we want a lot of time for that.
Brian, and this cross...
Uh, Caso.
Oh, sorry. Uh, and I certainly appreciate your comments, and certainly, we hold Coca-Cola the great value as far as, uh, the customer and the neighborhood, over the many decades that you've been here, and, uh, I think that it goes without saying that, uh, sort of partnership and, and a part of the family, the whole, you know, city and all of Potter County whole. When we visited last, uh, and we certainly voiced those issues of concerns, and I agree with, uh, Commissioner, you know, as far as the land being proposed first, you got that as far as, uh, incentive to move. You indicated that the land that you sit on right now and the structure, the infrastructure that you have is, uh, uh, sort of antiquated or becoming that, uh, very rapidly. So the move was, um, sort of going to take place, uh, anyway, in the sense of, uh, uh, being, uh, proposed or being presented an attractive piece of land that you could move to and, uh, and increase the enhancement of your infrastructure and the new, uh, design application that you want to have as far as moving forward involving Coca-Cola. So that piece was in place, and am I not correct?
Yeah, let me just clarify, make sure I'm hearing you correctly, uh, but, but also just clarify that, um, the current operation was, the company was not looking to invest into the current operation. We were not looking to grow, um, into a new facility or build a new facility in Amarillo. That was not being considered by our capital team at the time. Um, when the, uh, when AEDC came to, um, our company, we saw that there was a timely opportunity that we could be a part of making this redevelopment happen, helping to make it happen, as well as then move into a new facility that then would allow us to invest in order to grow the company operation here, rather than look at other facilities in the surrounding area for that growth potential.
So the abatement, I, you know, just to revolve the, uh, solid way, the abatement principally is to, for the enhancement over the 10-year period of Coca-Cola and its internal infrastructure, and going in the, the direction of your applications as far as what you are in, in this distribution area to, uh, ensure that it is very successful. That's basically the added incentive, added, uh, amount of the, the funds that you will, will, will be, will go into the enhancement of the infrastructure.
Correct. It is an abatement on the increment, the incremental increase in taxes, because we are moving from, um, one area town to another area town that we see in...
Those funds will be utilized for the...
Yes, because we will have the ability now to put in technologies that aren't able to be, um, uh, implemented in the current facility. So we will be able to have that opportunity to invest in new technologies.
In the current, in the current facility, uh, you will not have the means to do that in the current facility that you reside now.
That's correct.
But in the, the, the proposed, uh, site that you're moving to, that presents an opportunity to, uh, have those incentive or those enhancements.
The, correct, that the ceiling height in the current building does not allow us for the racking system that is needed for the newer technologies. So when, in the design of this, um, we implemented, um, we utilized, uh, the floor print of about 16 other facilities that have been built across the country in the last three or four years, and implemented those ceiling heights and weights and floor capacity to be able to have the technologies.
So it's, it's, it could be fair to say that it's, uh, a win-win for Coca-Cola to have the opportunity to move to the current structure that is somewhat being antiquated, you're not going to, you would not be able to do it, like, to is evolving into those enhancements where you stay, where you reside now, but actually moving into the new facility, those presents great opportunities to enhance your, your operations.
Commissioner, if I may, just real quick to echo on that, an important part of that sentence is that it is on the taxpayer dollar.
Right.
Uh, the projected project, 9.5 million, is coming from AEDC, which is taxpayer dollars. So I do, I mean, I think that's an important clarification, because that's absolutely innovation and discussion, and we want to hear that from all of our companies, but an important clarification is the taxpayers are building this building. Is that correct?
Actually, Commissioner, uh, while the funds to build the facility are coming out of AEDC offers, it is the equity of Coca-Cola in the downtown property that is going to be an asset for asset exchange.
But who will write the check? You or Coca-Cola?
It's the equity of Coca-Cola, so it's a wash. We have a broker opinion of value.
9.5 million is a wash, Brian?
Well, part, part of that is the land. Part of that is the land, which is always taxable.
But in this situation, will not be for the proposed project.
They're going to continue to pay the, the jurisdiction, like, what they pay, so, uh, but the increased benefit to Coca-Cola, $600,000 worth of moving relocation expenses, uh, out to the facility. In turn, we get a very, very valuable piece of land that the broker opinion of value puts it at eight and a half million, but it also puts it at maybe a little bit more, like 9.3. So we're, we're almost in line with the value of the construction, uh, based on those numbers.
But then that affects for Potter County is that that land is the, will equal zero to us because it is exempt. Now, I know, obviously, we'll have discussions about the ripple effect, if you will, of the potential around that, and I think Commissioner Church said it very well, the focus has obviously been on Coca-Cola, and rightfully so, um, and I certainly don't, don't mean this to come off rash, but who stands to benefit the most? Coca-Cola. Certainly a different discussion on the other side of the table, and... And even without this discussion of Potter County, uh, is really a, a package to be reckoned with in and of itself.
Right, and, and let's, let's just go back to the, uh, to the tax abatement agreement. Potter County is going to continue to be made whole on its taxes, so they can be made whole down here or out at the new building in Centerport. If the tax abatement is approved, that facility will now be at Centerport, which will have four times the value than anything that sits downtown current. Now, that's a 10-year investment by Potter County, and in year 11, not only is it the real property that's going to be at four times the value, but we've estimated that the business person will be at least double. Now, Coca-Cola will continue to pay the taxes that they have paid throughout the course of history, and those recent tax bill. The downtown property will be exempt, but Potter County will continue to be made whole on the new improvements at Centerport, and it is an investment in its future, and that in 10 years, four times the money, the tax revenue goes on in tax rolls, and it's going to be a profit.
And, um, Commissioner, I keep going back to your comment when we started the PowerPoint slide in terms of, um, significant economic impact for a 10-year, the language that you asked to kind of pause and come back to, and again, it is the framework, but, uh, that's certainly the tone, uh, that my perspective keeps moving back.
Right, and, and we talked about extraordinary economic benefit to the town. I think if any project constitutes extraordinary, it would be this one, because it is really the ripple effect where Potter County will, will receive the benefits from the downtown improvements. So it does take a little bit of vision, but that is really where Potter County will, will stand again.
I certainly, uh, agree with Coca-Cola's, uh, doesn't moving forward project. I think by doing, by not doing that, it would be perceived as negative, and your, uh, your, um, occupational professionalism, uh, and as, as, as getting a, a company, any organization...
Are you saying you would ask if you were on the other side, Commissioner?
So, absolutely, you know, but the mere fact where we sit is, um, somewhat of a, a unique, distinctive, uh, position in respect to representing the citizens of Potter County. Again, uh, four times the amount after a 10-year period, certainly, oh, well, I think that's an outstanding, uh, um, uh, enhancement. My question would be, and I think I answered that question, I mean, given the facts and given the, the overall commitment of Coca-Cola to Amarillo over these last 10 decades, so, and probably with enhancing the population and the growth being in this distribution area, it's certainly, uh, very enhanceable, that, that it's going to be continued, even more growth. If Coca-Cola was now afforded this abatement, and being, uh, true for what we've already, basically stated on both sides of this house, uh, uh, would that have such, uh, the grading effect that Coca-Cola would pick up and leave the area, knowing what it's requiring?
I appreciate your question, um, Judge and Commissioner Vaughn. I cannot say, I don't have the authority to say that we would be picking up to leave Amarillo, um, if the county were not to partake in this opportunity. What I can say, though, is that it does change the dynamics of the land exchange... Um what I can say, though, is that it does change the dynamics of the land exchange, land agreement, and so it would have to be looked at by our executive.
How would it, okay, that's my question, how would it change? I mean, you're actually moving to a, say, there's an in and out of times, an area where it's going to be very productive for Coca-Cola.
Well, I mean, the reality is that the financials are different, and so the financials have been approved, and we have put in this request as a part of a whole set of financials that are resting on um all of the incentives that have been uh presented as possible. And so um the executive team of working on this deal would need to take a look at those and make a decision. So I cannot speak for them to say that that's what we would do or not do, but that would be up to the executive team to evaluate the project based on a change in the financials.
Ms. Gossel, I'm I'm trying to imagine myself in that seat of the executive and obviously a board to report to and being able to justify, not from a Coca-Cola perspective, not being able to aggressively take advantage of an opportunity uh that is presented, that being a a building, uh that, as we mentioned, will equate four times in having an opportunity for such amazing growth in Amarillo proper and your your local jurisdictions even surrounding us. I couldn't imagine being that executive and having to report to a board of directors and saying, we didn't take the package uh because of eighty-one thousand a year. Uh now, I, that's more of a statement than a question, but uh I would imagine if I was that executive, it would be difficult to address the board of directors indicating to pass that opportunity, I guess, as an order, that you would use opportunity along. Um we all, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I guess it's a philosophical thing for me. One, of course, I always come back to, some, I think it was, predates Jack Kent, but says, everybody loves jobs, but they hate the job makers. And so I look at the tax money not as something that we, as the government, that's not ours. We go out there and get it, but it's it's the corporation's money, it's the same with individual taxes. It's just kind of a distribution of wealth. If Coca-Cola doesn't have to pay the eighty-one thousand, maybe their products still go up a bit, the cost of product. They can pass this this along, but it it goes to the public. So I don't know, it's just, it's one of those things, and when you look at what eighty-one thousand is to our revenue, it's just less than point two percent of our total revenue on property taxes.
I agree, Commissioner Church, I think what makes this proposal challenging is uh it would obviously be a very different conversation if Coke was coming to the table indicating a need for growth, building at the location in their own right, and I think the challenging layer from my perspective is uh the building being built on the taxpayer dollar. So certainly being advocates, as we are, for all of our constituents and kind of thinking through that. Uh we have our city manager here and Commissioner Sims as well. Uh if there are any questions in terms of downtown proper, we certainly recognize the proposal at hand and then the potential effect for downtown. Uh I have a couple of, maybe just statements, and I'll I'll look to you gentlemen for affirmation, if I'm saying this correctly, to give the commission framework of around downtown in a very loose, uh from a very loose perspective. And Jared, I'm not sure if you would like to address the court or Commissioner Sims, is there?
It's good, we'll have Commissioner Sims or I'll stand ready.
Okay, okay, so uh the multi-purpose events venue, the MPEV, uh which has commonly been called the Ball Field. The way that I understand it is that will be a twenty-three million dollar project. The city will own that and it will be essentially leased to a vendor, similar to our agreement with the Amarillo Sox, if you will. Uh very loose, I'm sure contractually, but essentially the net effect. One of the questions I had of our mayor and our city manager, quite honestly, is how do all these projects, one hundred and thirteen million combined, um how are we not, why, why and how are we not taking this to a vote of the people, just the sheer dollar amount? And so what I learned through that process is the proposal for the Ball Field will be twenty-three million. The city is making the capital invest, capital split on it, twenty-three million dollar project, proposing one hundred and twenty events a year, but uh the city will be going out for a bond, and it is a revenue bond. And so, of course, I asked for certification, because we don't get that at the county, uh and that is being secured. So the collateral, if you will, is on the hotel tax. Am I saying that correctly?
Hotel occupancy tax.
Hotel occupancy tax. So uh those essentially are people living outside of Amarillo, coming in, staying the night at a hotel, uh paying their taxes for their night, and obviously the city gets a portion of that. So that is what the city is using kind of as collateral, and forgive my uh small language, but I want to make sure that I'm equating it, using that fund as collateral for the revenue bond, and it's not a general obligation bond. Am I saying that okay? So that's twenty-three million, and that is the proposed Ball Field. The property itself would be exempt, uh since it is owned by the city.
Correct.
Correct.
The next project, uh in terms of order, uh the sequence as it's been proposed is the hotel garage and the Ball Field uh will be the last to go up in Amarillo. The hotel.
Hannah, I can interrupt.
Absolutely.
And that is that that the hotel and parking garage, which would be number one and number two respectively, are waiting to see what happens on the available due to this COVID.
Sure, sure.
So they're not a left five percent, it's not going to be, we'll get those two and then we'll make a decision on the Ball Field.
That's fair, thank you, Commissioner. Uh the other project is the hotel. The city will own the land. Um a private developer, I I jotted down sixty-five million, so keep me honest, but um a private developer will be the operator, they're kind of bringing the money, if you will, the sixty-five million, will build it, and there will be an eighty-year lease on that property, but the city will essentially own uh the property that it sits on.
Correct.
Okay. Um is it fair to say, and this may not be an appropriate way to equate it, uh but is it fair to say uh that the city kind of is is implied as a cosigner, if you will, um on that property? So should it, should it fail, which is obviously always the question, uh should should those projects fail, or should that fail or not be successful? What does that mean to the taxpayer if the city owns it, but a private developer, excuse me, has built that? What is the potential impact of that?
It'd be down the line after several mini-millions of dollars have been put into the project.
Sure.
We wouldn't step up on the first dollar. That ain't the handle. They're going to be bonded.
Okay.
And I'll let Jared explain that.
If I might.
Sure, please.
If I might, please.
Restate the question, Mr. Mancher, right one. Is is the question whether the city or the LCC, I think we use those terms interchangeably, is on the hook for capital debt to construct the hotel?
Uh.
As a cosigner?
Capital debt and or future operating expenses, if you will. I'm I'm really looking at what is the risk for our taxpayers uh for the hotel? If the city owns it and it has gone through the Wallace-Bajali process and been, you know, kind of outsourced out, what what does that mean to a local taxpayer?
I think the opportunity for the capital dollars involved in that hotel to hit the Amarillo taxpayers' residence, Potter County taxpayers' residence is incredibly, incredibly small. If I might, let you, let me give an example. The uh the ground, correctly stated, that's remained to the ownership of the city, is then leased to the hotelier. What the hotelier is collateralizing, to to use that term, is the fact that for that eighty-year period, if they meet all of the performance and operating standards and quality standards they have arrived by that property for that eighty-year period. So a little different than maybe when I had Fred by home, where I literally collateralized the house, the ground under it, et cetera. They're collateralizing only a rack to be there. That right then is predicated, on the public side is predicated by new contracting to build a hotel of a certain quality, of a certain size, operated in a certain manner, and to have the convention facilities, et cetera. Their lenders, their equity investors have to accept that, and they have to accept that upfront. So the the debt structure is to that, to that party's risk. If that party did not succeed for whatever reason, whoever's holding that debt is standing next in running their collateral as the right to operate, to manage, to perform in that facility for the remainder of whatever period of time. I could not say it's impossible to reach through the debt structure to the public. I think it would be extremely, extremely difficult, and it's part and parcel of the function of the local government corporation. The actual land leases in their hands, presented in the city, and your local government corporation only has such revenue, so a dollar available to it as what either it earns or it is given by the city council. I think that was a long explanation.
No, but I think that's fair.
Hope I covered it.
Uh and will that pro, will that project, I I jotted Jared that that project would be taxable, and I'm trying to understand that uh with the city obviously owning the land and that lease structure, and how that might be different from the multi-purpose uh venue.
The majority of that property will be taxable, just as any other hotel is taxed in Amarillo. There are portions, mainly in the common areas, the convention space, um that by state law can be exempted through the public purpose argument. So when you get into, and not that those spaces don't have a revenue, they would, when you get into the true revenue producing part of the hotel, that will be taxed on the same basis as the Fiscus.
Okay.
For for example, a woman's boss.
And on the parking garage, the way I understand that is that will be a thirteen million dollar project. It will be retail space at the bottom level, if you will. Um two faces will have retail space, and that will be a general obligation bond that the city goes out for, and that will, the retail space on just the first floor will be taxable. Uh the other tiers or levels, if you will, will not. Did I say that correctly?
I I think you did. The current proposal, uh the garage will be owned, operated, managed, et cetera, by the public. It's not different than any other parking lot.
Sure.
That we have. The retail space at the time, because we're going to use that for a parking spot until somebody says, I want, I want to restore it there. Uh but up until the time that becomes a revenue-producing property, it's not everything the other one.
Okay.
Now, I don't want to get expectations out of the kind of source. It's a large structure, seven hundred and fifty-plus parking spots, upwards, something in the neighborhood of a maximum of thirty thousand square feet would be retail. So space-wise, it's a small portion.
So I just, I wanted to state that kind of framework for the commission, uh because I think, you know, obviously it goes without saying, the the proposal at hand, but the ripple effect has been discussed today and what that might look like. So in all fairness, I I wanted to pass along that information, have you here for affirmation. I certainly can't speak on behalf of the city, want to make sure that I heard correctly and the board had that. Mr. Church, did you ask?
Well, talking ripple effect, I know firsthand, trying to bring a national conference here, our limitations have been a hotel next to a convention center. We've lost out on that particular conference and many state conferences we could bring here that we are not able to. So the ripple effect is pretty deep. Um you know, we have a convention visitor, visitor bureau people here, and you might want to speak to that as well. Anyway, that's another thing that we need to keep in mind.
Thank you very much. Um I'd like to open the floor if there is any public comment to address the court. We certainly want to allow time for that. Please feel free to come to the podium and state your name.
Alan Fine, go. How many minutes do I get?
Through, sir.
It is impossible to go over all the issues that are present in three minutes, but I'll tell you this much. The AEDC was negotiating with Coca-Cola Corporation for a four-point-one million dollar building, which the AEDC had constructed at Centerpoint, and the building was so defective that the uh negotiation broke down. Then the AEDC comes up with a negotiation for an eight-point-eight million dollar building, more than double the original offer they made of Coca-Cola. And of course, they have to move them for six hundred thousand, and the land goes with it. This isn't a land exchange, this is a, I'm not going to say it, let's say a very convoluted deal, which you should examine very closely. And by the way, this will affect Potter County Stadium. Essentially, the city proposes to have this front, called the Amarillo Local Government Corporation, create with public money or at least an inducement, a stadium which is going to compete with Potter County, Potter County Stadium. Now, maybe that's a good idea, I don't know, but that deserves a discussion in itself, since now you can get revenue from a baseball team for the maintenance of Potter County Stadium. We do not know if this hotel deal is anything more than hypothetical. We have no names, we have no commitment, we have no statement from either the city or the local government corporation that they actually have anyone ready to build anything. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, thank you. Um do I have any other public comment? Have a, if you have, I'll be here to the far right and then we'll. Good morning.
Thank you, Alan Abraham. I'm a resident of Randall County, but we share a common downtown, this court. And I appreciate what you all are doing, giving this, I mean, very convoluted issues having to do with downtown revitalization, a public area, and I hope that area, A I R, and I hope that continues. I want to focus your attention just for a moment on a template, is what I'm calling it. It's a template for downtown redevelopment that's been popular around the nation. This template consists of building a new convention hotel reinforced by a ballpark and some new uh street-level retail outlets outlets, and it's been around for at least two decades. It was first introduced to Amarillo by our Downtown Development Task Force in two oh six oh eight, later promoted by the Wallace-Bajali Partners as part of their hotel pursuit work in the spring of twenty-eleven. Now, Commissioners, it's a template, it's a cookie cutter, if you will. And like any template, it requires fine-tuning to each specific location before its adoption. And really, that's never happened in Amarillo. Does an outdoor event venue, for example, an outdoor venue fit Amarillo? I don't know. But I can tell you that I don't think research has been done on that very carefully. Is a newly constructed convention hotel necessary when there is a historic hotel property standing within three thousand feet of the convention center, ready for renovation? If a taxable, emphasis on taxable, privately-owned and operated convention hotel can be brought online, parking garage included, for fifty-two million dollar, instead of the city's proposed non-taxable, publicly-owned and leased convention hotel for sixty-five or sixty-nine million, parking garage not included, wouldn't you want to see that the Haring Hotel option was vetted publicly?
You have thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds, Mr. Church.
Before you proceeded to vote on the Coca-Cola deal? In fact, right now, you wouldn't even be in this tax rebate situation were it not for a general template being, in my estimate, superficially imposed on Amarillo's downtown future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Another comment?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. My name is Dan Quan, I'm vice president of the Amarillo Convention and Resort Council. Uh I wanted, one, I want to correct one statement that was brought in, it's fact that it's not, the uh the hotel as organized right now will be run by Newcrest Image, as announced publicly here a number of months ago, which is also the same corporation that owns the courtyard at Marye Castle. Uh and they are very eager, keep going on this project, with our offices, among many others, to have a number of meetings with them on on moving forward and and what our marketing strategies are to help assist. what our marketing strategies are to help assist with that. The other thing I just want to keep in mind without throwing a lot of fingers up is we've talked about the movement of money to the county, from the county, to Coca-Cola, from Coca-Cola. And we keep forgetting one of the statements. And we've got this, and Commissioner Church talked about eighty-one thousand and what that means in the big thing. If you look at that as the garden hose and the water coming out of the garden hose, with this entire project, we're about to open the firehouse in terms of new dollars because all taxing entities, whether it's you, the city, anybody is trying to find new ways to create revenue that are necessary. We're going to create revenue from the people who are going to come in and use that hotel and use that parking garage and especially use that multi-purpose of that venue. If we have right now, the state stats are roughly a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and thirty dollars a day, then a person coming to town for an event being like a sporting event, for example, that we could bring, not necessarily the socks, but if we were able to bring in a USA baseball event and have a tournament. Well, if we have five thousand people in there at a hundred and twenty-seven bucks per person, that's like, if my math was right, sitting back here in the, I'm not a magician, but it's over six hundred thousand dollars direct spending. That's not multipliers, that's not, I'm just kind of dollars being dumped here. And that's one day, one event. And we're talking, you know, the development report talks about a hundred and twenty events. So I can't tell you if we'll do a hundred and twenty events or not. But if you do ten, you know, then you've got, over six twenty right there. You've got all those ancillary things that everyone talks about. We're not just talking about the retail at the bottom of the parking garage. We're talking about all, how downtown will develop to support what is needed for the hotel and for the ballpark. There are going to be a lot of these. Plus, it's just going to be a much better place to live for all the citizens of Potter County that are part of this, so.
You have thirty seconds.
And that's all I really wanted to share at this point. We're always here to assist the county, the city, and anyone else as we can to promote these facilities and ensure they work positively for the community and the county.
Thank you very much, Nick. And I think an important clarification from Potter County side of the house is, you know, obviously, generation of disposable income is a win for all parties that get access to those dollar amounts. We are not one of those. The bulk of our income is property tax, so absolutely a viable discussion, but with my Potter County hat on, certainly looking from a perspective of the value back to the dollars. Yes, sir?
Thank you so much. My name is Vince Hiller. And I think you're asking the good part of the question that needs to be asked. What I hear are a lot of ifs, 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 that this happens, everything will be fine. I don't think it's wise to deal in ifs. I don't think, based upon what I've looked at, that the abatement meets our Potter County criteria for tax abatement. You have the discretion to notwithstanding grant the abatement. I don't think it's a sound exercise in that discretion, of exercising that discretion without first asking, "Oh, is this a deal breaker?"
Which is a...
It's been asked, it hasn't been answered.
That's right.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment?
I'm Jimmy Presley-Hammons. I live at fifteen fourteen South Pearson. Good morning, Commissioners and Judges. I want to take you to your management station and put yourself in my mind. My neighborhood, which I live in, is a famous addiction, East of Paul Street, south of East Ten. The residents are very poor, they live on paycheck, paycheck. The houses are old and require constant emptying. There are several places that help out citizens of Amarillo there. I'm a college center, St. Hayden, Uten, and St. Chapl. I have several ministries to help people. People who had a college education or skill are now writing. When taxes are raised, let y'all know the furniture or you can pay attention. Each September, both city and county rests taxes. What about the people who for different reasons have a different, had a different path in college? I don't mind paying taxes, the mindset thing, without being a taxpaying citizen of Amarillo. Well, I don't like the way my taxes are being spent. Given one of the richest corporations on the planet, AICAP, million plus six hundred thousand dollars, the movement cost is very upsetting to me, plus lots of other people, especially my people. It just don't seem, it's just not seem fair to me. This man can beat you for projects with tax payers like Club of Carnage Shelter in different four sides of town. And when you have late night storms and there's no place, there's no place for the four to go. It seems to me like the ones for the ballpark are taking a large gamble on whether they'll work. David Wallace, I might be incorrect on this, but anything I say is incorrect, please correct. David Wallace and Coach Fajali is supposed to pay the ball field, build the ball field for free. I have not yet seen anything for free in my life. Their track record of building downtown centers have had cases of being sued for not doing what they claimed they would do. I would not do buildings. The monies involved should be used for work, for work on the civic center, which is in bad need of repairs. On Friday and Saturday night, there are no big crowds on Paul Street. I thought the Maryak was supposed to do this.
You have thirty seconds. Go ahead, sir. You have thirty seconds.
How come the Haring Hotel is fixed up? They have a lot of history now, a lot of history. Amarillo always. When the ex-mayor is going away, he's expanding business to another city, the ex-mayor that owns may not, allocating something right there. They may not, the business will be a thing of the past here. Remember the ex-mayor's on Paul Street? All the rules and regulations for sold domain and now we're to build a brand-new building to move his restaurant south of Amarillo.
Jimmy, your time has expired. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? And or anyone that would like to speak?
Yeah, I'm Gary Finner. Citizen of Amarillo, Texas, Potter County, Texas. This is a good project for this community. You know, we have made historically three attempts at downtown development in our history. The first one was in nineteen fifty-nine. It was a plan called Mecca, believe we call the plan Mecca. Mecca nineteen sixty-nine. It was a ten-year plan for revitalization of downtown Amarillo. We didn't have the political will at that point in time to implement the plan. It was three winters, we didn't, we didn't. Thirty years later, we tried again. The public recognized the need to revitalize the heart of this community in downtown Amarillo with another plan. It largely went unimplemented again. The third time was in two thousand and eight with the development of current Strategic Action Plan, which is now attempted to be implemented within our community. And I'm a bit afraid that the third time, we might just strike out and this might be our last opportunity to do something that, in my opinion, is critically important to this community, not simply an entity called Potter County, or an entity called the City of Amarillo, or an entity called the Amarillo Community Health District, or an entity called Panhandle Groundwater Conservation District, of my community of Amarillo, Texas. You know, when you can find a project in a community that meets multiple objectives at the same time, in my mind, that's a good project that this community needs to invest in. This is an economic development project for Coca-Cola, a long-term, longstanding corporate good member of this community. It positions them to be successful and continue to employ Amarilloans for decades to come. That is a good economic development project for Amarillo, Potter County, Texas. This project meets convention needs in this community. We are woefully short, as Dan, if he's honest with you, will tell you, in terms of facilities to host conventions in this town. And we are missing out on millions of dollars' worth of opportunity in convention centers because we have not had sleeping rooms adjacent to the Civic Center or a convention center hotel with adequate meeting space in order to meet the needs of many, many conventions that should be coming to this town. So it's a good project from a convention and district development standpoint. This is a good project from a community and quality of life standpoint, from my perspective. That baseball stadium over there, Impel, whichever you choose to call it, will provide this community to gather a state-of-the-art gathering spot for this community, the citizens of this community, this and this county, whether from the north side, the south side, the east side, or the west side. Whether you're the richest guy in town or you're that guy's plumber, you're going to be able to enjoy quality of life in Amarillo in a public facility such as the one we're talking about, but we've never had the opportunity to have this. And finally, in my opinion, this project is transformational in the history of the core of this community in downtown Amarillo. And the kinds of opportunities that it will, it will develop, you speak to the ripple effect. I truly believe that that's an honest evaluation of what will take place. And I will come back in five years and eat that coffee cup from your diastere if we have not seen millions of dollars of associated development come as a result of this catalyst project. This was intended, designed, not out of nowhere, but in a very methodical way, with public participation over a long period of years to be a catalyst project. This is a good project for Amarillo, Potter County, Texas. And I will just close by saying, you will never get returns on investments that you own. Thank you.
I think I have only three minutes left.
Will I even answer?
I think y'all are in an unfair position because it all comes down to, you know, the way it's being set up is not set up, the way it appears is that the fate of downtown revitalization rests on y'all. I don't think that's fair to y'all, but here we are. As you consider your options, some are continue negotiation instead of an ex officio seat. How about a voting seat? Take the matter bylaws today. Instead of a full one-hundred percent, ten-year tax abatement, how about something a little bit less? It seems as if that's just been pretended as the only option. I don't think it is. I do want this project to succeed. I think it would be incredible for Amarillo to have work. Y'all are in a tough position and I don't like the fact that y'all have been rushed. At least that's my impression. Appreciate y'all's questions. As for a voting seat, as for less than a ten-year, one-hundred percent tax abatement. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have two more, Mr. Speaker.
Good morning, Commissioner McGee, other county commissioners. Welcome. It's a pleasure to be here.
In your name, sir.
Robert Goodrich. I live at forty-one eleven Stony Point, which is Randall County, but I'm a proud Potter County property owner. And I would love to make a contribution to this downtown revitalization effort. I have been advocating downtown revitalization for about twenty years, long before this current initiative got underway. I own a property that I would love to see revitalized. I'd love for it to be a major contributing, tax-paying property in this, in this project. So just so you are aware, there is an official option to consider if you're looking for an option. And I'm not wanting to preempt or preclude the possibility of anybody building a hotel downtown. That's not my business. I just want to see my hotel revitalized and built. I would love to have support for it. I have tried to get support, but it's really come hard. I think it's wonderful that we have so much energy being expended in support of revitalizing our downtown. My own opinion is it may be a little bit out of a convoluted process. My opinion is we should start with what we've already got rather than simply focus on building new. The new stuff is wonderful. I got, who could object? But what about the stuff that remains, that's available to be renovated and restored, but nobody's paying any attention to, or not very much, anyway? I would just like to, I'd like for you to know that my property, Haring Hotel Building, has been mentioned as a, as a possible. It's true. I have cost estimates that would revitalize that property, turn it into a two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty-room hotel with a parking garage for fifty-two million bucks. It's a whole lot less money than building brand-new, and that's simply because of the benefit of having an existing structure. It's not the only alternative, but it is one alternative that I think merits consideration. And it wouldn't preempt the city's building another hotel if it wants to. But it's hard for me to imagine how the city of Amarillo could justify becoming an owner of a hotel property. That is so tortured, in my opinion. It just needs to be weighed extremely carefully before the city is committed to it. It's not just those city commissioners, it's the taxpayers of the, of the city and the county who are at stake there. And I think that is a very serious consideration. Thank you very much.
Can I see one final comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate y'all's hard work. I'm Victor Lial, resident of County, actually business here as well. Actually, I'm a customer of Coke too. Commissioner McGee, I think your line of question is spot-on. I think when, I echo the fact that you guys have done a lot of hard work, but you did put me in a tough position because all of a sudden, all of this has come to the head and it's like an all or nothing, it's a zero-sum game. I think it's a strong man argument, to be quite frank with you. I think that if you take the position that if we vote against this abatement, everything goes away, that has been proven. I don't believe that Coca-Cola, being offered this incredibly generous deal, will walk away from this if you don't abate your taxes because Commissioner Church and I'll give respect, on the same token on their side, that's a minuscule amount of money for them to pay as taxes. And so I ask you, you have other options too. You can always table this vote, learn more about the projects. This has come to you, it seems like, quickly and put a lot of pressure on you guys. Lastly, I would like to make a clarification too, or an observation anyway. The gentleman from AEDC makes the point that this is a swap. You challenged that. You said, "No, this is taxpayer money, you know, at the park, at the business park. It's two million dollars and it's going to nine million dollars. That seems like a seven-million-dollar difference." The case they're trying to make is, is no, there's equity built in that. Then if this, if the case is that Coca-Cola, as it exists, is already a nine-million-dollar, you know, place, then I would say you've already abated their, their taxes for quite a number of years. So I'd ask you to consider that as well. Appreciate all y'all's hard work on this. And I would like to see downtown revitalized, restaurant business, these conventions are great for me, but don't bind this argument that if you don't make this abatement, it's not going to work.
Thank you very much. Right, I think that we have certainly allocated time for all parties. The discretion of this court really lies in terms of how we would like to dissect this and/or take the position on this proposal. I'd like to open the floor for discussion from the court and/or a potential vote on the table.
Proud to doing that. There's a question I have as far as the date that was proposed. The date is June twenty-fifth.
Correct.
As far as, I guess, having all things in order to proceed with the project, it was sort of presented in a criticality way. So I want to give someone else some clarification on that. Is that a date that is brought out concerning the beginning of negotiations with this court?
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a ninety-day due diligence period that began with the execution of the intended deal structure. Ends on June twenty-fifth. During that time, we have secured title commitments and environmental reports on both properties, and that is all properties for all parties involved, including the city. But the reason I think that there is some misunderstanding about the timeline associated with this project is we began talking with all of the taxing jurisdictions shortly thereafter we reached the deal. We cannot talk about a project if there is no project. And so we began our rounds of discussions with all of the taxing jurisdictions, and we were actually alerted by Coke that, by senior management, that this tax abatement approval was necessary to move forward with approval on the year. So the rush, the perceived rush, has really been get the deal ain't. Now we're in the due diligence period. They alerted us the tax abatement was necessary. We started that process and now here we are. So...
And I would add a couple of comments to that, Commissioner, at least from my perspective. So I'm referencing a particular article in the local paper late October, and I certainly could have that timeline incorrect. I know it was mid-fall. Really speaking to logistics of this potential move in Coca-Cola, and in my opinion, there was some certainty to that article, that there had been discussions made. From my knowledge, this kind of opening window period started March twenty-seventh. I was requested to attend to meeting in mid-May in terms of, just to kind of give you perspective of timeline of mid-May.